Yeah, we get some guests. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 14th of 2020. And with us today, we have Lisa, our county auditor. Luann is our executive assistants. We have Mike Clausen here from the engineer department. Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, Mike Steinis, myself, Mike Steinis, so your county engineers. First on our agenda today is Mike. Good morning, Mike.
The first thing I have is a right away contract for Jay, senior in its number Jay. Let's go to the 400 Street Bridge. Just know what you're saying. It was right off the 52 for next summer.
We got to get some right away for that?
2607 acre additional right away there. The contracts for 2008. 2800.
And then we just do a bridge up there, a day bridge up there last year somewhere or just off in the right first road to the right?
We did one up on the Strout Road.
No, yeah, 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 that's right.
I approve of the right away contract authorized chair design in second.
I have a motion in second to approve the right away contract as presented and the chair to sign. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, the next is a, we've got Spragueville's swap project, I guess you want to call it.
Yeah.
The rural county transportation program project for the city of Spragueville. They've signed it. That's the board to approve that and the chair sign it.
Motion to approve, second.
A motion in second to approve the RCTP project submitted by Spragueville, which we previously discussed with Chandra and and noted participants. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carried. Are you 25? Was it 25? Sumila was 25. Lamont was 25, 23 something.
20,941.
Are you muted, Jeff, or no?
Pardon?
Getting an echo back from you somewhere.
Well, I'm muted. So why now?
Yeah, it's quite. Okay, and we voted on that, correct? Or did we not?
Yes, we did.
Nope. Yeah.
Yeah.
Motion approved. Yeah, I thought we did too. That's it?
That's it.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other comments or news?
No, that's all I have, I guess.
Alex with Don did some surveying, is that correct?
Yes, he surveyed the 188th Street Bridge. Sounds like he's got it sized now. It's going to be 160 foot long. DNR requirements.
So you're taking out both approaches. You're putting two pairs in and then having. That'll look a lot different there.
Yes.
What about the homeowner there? When we first closed, they talked to him. He was concerned about the erosion on the bank close to his house. What happens with that?
Well, underneath the bridge will have rip raps.
So there's nothing unexpected there, correct? We're still online to hopefully to get her as soon as we can.
Yeah, still on schedule for March of letting the bank here.
Okay.
Kind of depends on the VNR and the four.
Well, that's what I hear.
And that can take a while.
Sometimes, sometimes it's fast.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Mike.
You can take this.
Lisa?
Just this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 board proceedings as written by our office.
A motion in second approved the minutes of the July 7th, 2020 board proceeding as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carried. Wow, we are rolling along. Is there any visitors or citizens on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak? Have any concerns? If not, we'll ask Luann for her business for the day, the week.
Good morning.
Morning.
Calendar for the week this afternoon at four o'clock is a watershed management authority executive board meeting by Zoom for Larry. Tomorrow at four o'clock on July 15th is a workforce executive board meeting by Zoom for Jack. On Friday, July 17th at 10:00 a.m. is a workforce office hours meeting for Jack on Google Meet. And also 10 o'clock is a watershed management authority technical committee meeting by Zoom for Larry. Monday, July 20th at 1:00 p.m. is the regional advisory committee by Zoom for Jack. But what at 3:00 by the regional governing board for Eastern Iowa, probably also by Zoom for Jack. And 7:00 o'clock that night is a Together We Build meeting for Jack. They've been doing that in person here in town, right?
You can do either.
Either one, okay. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. That that evening at 6:00 o'clock is Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting via Zoom for Jack. And a conservation board meeting for Larry and it's starting at the Black Hawk Wildlife Area for a tour and then going to her special site. That is all the business I have for you today. It's a new record.
Jeffy to wrap up some of these meetings. That work for us. I said, you've got a lot of meetings.
13 last month.
Last week, 13.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's what they would every other day.
Yeah.
You've been on the road, yeah. Okay, anything else for Luann? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very short agenda today. Is there anything else before the board, any?
Well, my guess last week I was talking about the workforce as I do every week, but Friday at 1:00 of last week was the deadline for the Southeast Community College to sign their contract to provide the youth services. They did not. So we were going to send them a letter, you know, basically saying, since you didn't sign the contract, we withdraw the offer. But in the meantime, they contacted Miranda, our CEO, and said they were not going to sign it. So it kind of leaves us in a bind because July 1st, the contract expired with Clinton Community College and with Southeast community colleges to provide that service. And so we discussed it and talked with the state department, and I guess we have to send out new RFPs for somebody to provide that service. So in the interim, the state is going to handle any requests that we get from any youth for additional training and tuition funding, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know. When I talked to Miranda yesterday, she said she'd had two inquiries from people that were interested in possibly applying for that. I said, one of them doesn't happen to be Southeast Community College, does it? And she said, no, I don't think they would dare apply again. So Nick Huckabee is on the executive committee for the workforce and he'd sent an email to Miranda and said that maybe the next time we send the RFPs at the same time, we send a copy of the contract so that they can review that before they apply.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
And Miranda said, well, we did do that last time. We just had the one application from Southeast Community College. But it looks like this time we might have two that are going to apply. But it still takes, you have to get it. They have so many days to to fill out the application and return it. And then there's a waiting period for us, the board, to review it and then proceed with the process of getting somebody to sign the contract. And this will just be for from July 1st to December 31st. And then this fall, we will have to re send requests for proposals out again for starting in January on January.
So they run a calendar year or they'll run a calendar year contract normally? And but this one expired June, July 1st. Is that normal?
Is anything normal?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just surprised that they don't, I mean, not to say I don't want to business, but you know.
Well, it, my understanding is that it's the calendar year, but I could be wrong. It might, it would be make much more sense if it was the academic year, June, June to July, but or July to June.
That's where all the budgets are set for. That's where all the budgets are set and everything, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it is a multi-year contract. So, but anyway, that's where we are with that. And I have not heard back from Jane about about the
Head Start. I was curious what HACAB had gotten noticed yet.
They, I haven't gotten anything from her. And last week when I talked to her, she thought they would be hearing shortly about Head Start. And I would certainly think they would be because
Yeah, we're getting transferred.
We're getting very, very close.
Are we talking about the floor now here? Are we talking about just opening up or?
We're talking about them getting a contract to do Head Start.
Yeah.
Instead of CDI. And at our meeting last week, she said they they still didn't know. Isn't that what you got, Larry, from the conversation? So we don't know where that is. And I told her repeatedly that it's our intent to do that flooring before school starts. And I don't know when school's going to start, but we want to get that done. And of course, Marty's not here anyway. But there are some issues that we need to deal with. One of the, one of the big things is the financial aspect of it. We need to know what that's going to be.
Yeah.
Also, last week at our meeting, we discussed the 28E and we should still be, Jane said that they were working on the resolution for the 28 partners to send that. So when that gets here, we'll have to pass that. All of us sign it. But at our meeting, we talked about if there was any guesstimate as to what the ending debt might be. And Joel and and Joe and Jane said, JJJ, they all said that they were working on that and they hoped by the end of August, they would have a better, a better handle on the figures. Because actually, the main thing is if they get the Head Start program, then they would be able to negotiate with the government on a forgivable debt so that the money that we supposedly owe Head Start from 2017 might be forgiven or maybe reduced.
That's 65,000.
65,000? No, it's 124,000.
Oh, for two years.
No, it's just for that one year.
Really?
So anyway, they're still going to be working on that. So but there is, there is some, I mean, it looks like now there will be some carryover money when we get the merger completed. And so, but that magic figure is still not available. And it's, and and when I talked about it, the other, the other partner said, yeah, they needed to know too. Because we're just, I mean, Delaware County and Jackson County will pay 15% of that debt. And Dubuque and Dubuque County will each pay 35%. So I would think they would really want to know what the amount's going to be. But I really, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm really excited about change because they do provide considerably more services than we do. And I think that we'll be in good hands. Next month at our meeting, we'll discuss potential board members for the HACAB board. And we tried to get them to increase their board. Right now it's at 17, or no, 18. And
21 or something.
They would, they, we wanted, they, they, according to their bylaws, they can have up to 24. So we kind of, we, huh?
That's a lot of people, I mean.
Operation New View's board's 27.
Yeah. They're crazy big meetings.
Because you have to have low income, you have to have public, you have to have elected officials. And then you have to have a representative from Head Start. And there's all these different classifications of members. And so by the time you get all those classifications, it's a big board. But they, their board opted only to increase by three. So that means potentially, each one of the three counties that are joining them, Jackson, Dubuque, and Delaware County, would each have only one representative. One has to be an elected official, one has to be public, and one has to be low income. So we don't know who those individuals will be, but they said that was something that we would be discussing at our August board meeting. But they also, and I have my reservations about it, but they're also talking about keeping our board active as an advisory committee to HACAB. And I guess the thing I said, you know, that's fine and dandy, but if we are going to continue to meet, this, that doesn't mean anything we advise them on is going to go through. And, you know, all of us have busy schedules that are on that board. And if it's, if it's going to be just meeting and discussing what HACAB is doing, I'm not so sure that's something that we need to do.
When you already have a board through HACAB anyway, I mean, you have a, yeah.
But it does, it, it does kind of disturb me a little bit that there would only be one person from each county.
Yeah, to give that information. But won't you have somebody from like our board and then also somebody from Head Start? No?
Not necessarily from our board.
No, it's just they're taking three people out of the 27.
Yeah. So there'd be one elected official and one private sector and one low income. So whichever county gets what is, you'll have to select the most.
You know, yeah, going forward, you know, the nice thing about it, maybe these, most of the meetings are going to be accessible, accessible through the Zoom type thing, you know, that you can attend. I sat in on the meeting the other day just to listen, you know. It sounds like that. I like, HACAB can offer a lot of variety of things that they're, sound really positive, yeah.
Yeah, I think Jane and Mitch have done a really good job. But I, I guess I basically said to them, you know, at our meeting the other night, I said, when are you going to make the public announcement? The 28 agreement has, has signed off on the merger. The the board last week approved the MOU memorandum of understanding for the merger. And I think, you know, I said, I think it's time that in each one of the counties and in the communities, you send a press release or something announcing. I said, maybe the people that utilize the services of Operation New View might know that this is in the works. But I said that the general public doesn't. Unless they listen to our supervisors' meetings. But when you think of it, October 1st isn't that far away.
Not at all.
And I guess we're fortunate in the fact that we'll still have our office here.
Yeah.
And Renell will still be operating that, or Reno Park will still be operating that office. And the services will be there. But I guess the thing I want to know is, because I don't know for sure exactly what the extent of all the original services are. I know they do some housing, but I don't know to what extent. So I think there's some, some things, some questions that a lot of.
Unknowns that are there, yeah.
But I do know they have rental assistance and and that sort of stuff, which we do some now, but it's not, it's not a huge amount. But
Well, I would sure like to see something good to move a little on that flooring too, if we have an opportunity. I guess we can't move along any faster than what they decide.
Yeah, and I don't know if the holdup is finding out whether Head Start's going to provide some funding. I don't know if that's, but we've been talking about it for at least three or four months.
Yeah, so are we better off just to go ahead and pay for it and get it done and and then raise our rent or do something to offset it?
I don't know, because that's one thing that we have to, we as a board are going to have to look at because we have to renegotiate the lease.
If you look at that, if you go down and look at.
I haven't, I can't.
The problem with that is a lot of this stuff that's in the ground. We would literally have to rent a semi trailer, something. I mean, there's a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, there is.
And then to have, you know, to have, who would carry all of that stuff out, put it in the trailer, bring it all back in? I mean, the flooring is secondary. It really is. Yeah, I don't know if they're going to have.
What about Schuler's? They do estates and moving and stuff. Would they be interested in moving it to one of their buildings and then moving it back?
Well, there again, we'd have to work with whoever's in charge.
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as the funding goes, I, I think you're going to have a hard time if you go ahead and do it and pay for it. Then to get funding for it, I think that's going to be a tough look. I don't know.
Well, I would think it press upon it. Yeah, I would think it would be pretty short term if they'd have to store it.
I would think so.
I would say less than a week that floor should be done.
Have we decided that for sure? We, at one time, we thought we could go over that.
The other question I would have is who makes the final decision as far as what gets put down? CDI is only a temporary company. HACAB hopefully is going to be coming in. It's our building. What happens if we say we want?
Laminate.
Laminate, vinyl, tile, whatever.
Well, I think that's something, I mean, I think that's something we'll have to negotiate with them on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would. And would it be better to do a spray system on it? Like they do in commercial buildings? That's a good question. And like a Torganol type thing or something?
I think those are things that we're going to have to.
We can't really discuss.
What about HACAB? Do they have any specifications that they have to follow?
I have no idea. I know they run the, they run the Head Start programs in their area, but I don't know.
And there again, maybe can you spray that step down over that? I don't know.
Well, they want the carpeting, what little carpeting is in it, they want all of that tore off.
Yeah. And I understand that.
Yeah, I get that. Yeah. So and then the question is, you know, they're going to have to cut it. There's the big island there. It's, it's a long island. I don't know if it goes underneath the island or if they just.
About it?
Yeah, they butt, if they butt it into it, I, so there's some, some work that needs to be done. And then with the amount of things that are in the building, it's a mystery. I would think maybe three weeks. By the time you come in and mitigate, let the building air out, you know, and then lay back down, let the building air back out again. I would think they could get, let's just say a month. So if you think about school starting, they had to log it.
Well, and today is the 14th of February or 14th of July, thinking of Valentine's Day.
So that's why, I mean, we just haven't been able to get anybody to be on a different pace than what we're on.
Well, I will, I will try to call, our meeting's done today. I'll try to call Jane and see, you know, how we can proceed.
Yeah.
And ask her, maybe even be on the call with nature to see if we can find out if they have any idea what kind of flooring they want. If if they get it or any kind of flooring since they have Head Start already, what the regulations might be and et cetera. And tell her we really need to get on the stick.
And Jane with HACAB, is that correct?
Yeah, she's the CEO.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, because the guy from CDI is like, oh, oh, no, no, how about you think? No. I mean, he was just, this is it, yeah.
Yeah. So the only one I know that put that down here is Bruce DiAgostino in his dental office when we remodeled that.
Yeah, yeah.
And they sprayed that whole system. And it, I mean, it makes a really nice floor and it is, I mean, the seamless.
It is nice, yeah.
And it's, it's just. So maybe a contact with him to find out who that company was. I know they weren't from around here, but but they went over all that floor and there was, they just both loaded. Yeah. They both loaded it and never finished it. And then they put carpet over it. I mean, walking on the carpet, you could feel how rough it was. And I remember Bruce telling the guy, and he says, this floor is really rough. And he's, oh, no, we can go over anything that we'll just spray it on like that. And he says, no, this is really rough. And when they got there, they're like, oh, yeah. I mean, they were in their floor grinders. Yeah, they did it to my son's basement too, where they would be a different style of floor. I don't know how they do it. Different, couple different treatments, but they leveled out, they grind them off. You know, because it's, it was a fact that, you know, sometimes he has minor water issues and these, this. Yeah. I'm, I'm sure that would pass any Yeah. type of inspection or. And it was reasonable. It really was. But first you'd have to get the old one up.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's our issue, the glue and the dial and, you know. Yeah.
And see the guy from CDI, I don't think he wanted us to put anything just over top. He wanted everything taken out, get down to the cement and then start all over again. You know, one time we just talked about just putting a laminate over top and he said no.
So it really needs. Well, how much they, they're going to have?
Well, that's, that's all right.
Are they out of the picture? Yeah. But maybe they're following the same guidelines that need to be followed. Yeah, well, you can have that phone conversation and see where we're at. We'll get an update on that. Any other unfinished business that we have before us? Did you decide on the fairgrounds for the testing station?
Yes, they're supposed to find out. Luann should get a email today because at our meeting yesterday, Nick said that Ed, whatever his name is, that's Luann for Dubuque County. And someone else from Dubuque, can't remember who the other person was, we met yesterday and it would be, if it'll be, we think this Saturday from 6:00 a.m. until 10:00 a.m. at the fairgrounds, you'll go in on quarry and out on Highway 62. And they said when they had it in, was it Eppert?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it was Eppert. They had it there.
Starting from five to nine.
Five to nine. And at 5:00 in the morning, they had over 200 cars waiting in line.
And 3:30, people were like.
Yeah.
So just so the, if the public's listening here, we're talking.
This, we're talking about testing.
For COVID. COVID testing.
Test I was saying, is it a test I was saying?
Yes, yes. And it's headquartered out of Dubuque, but they are. And it's headquartered out of Dubuque, but they are, um they're supposed to do outreach. And so they contacted Nick and asked him, and so there were about twelve of us on the call yesterday. And um Brad Coranda would kind of do the uh traffic control and um. Uh anyway, it sounds like it'll either be this Saturday or the next Saturday. But I think it worked out well this Saturday for Lanny at the fairgrounds. Because they didn't have anything till the races in the afternoon. So uh we'll find out, and um I told Luann, when she got the information. That may, maybe she should send out a email to everybody in the, all the offices in the courthouse to let them know that it was gonna happen.
Sure.
And I know Nick will do uh news media about it. So um. That's all I know about.
Well, we're fortunate to have a radio station local anyway that a lot of people listen to, and word travels pretty fast. So.
Couple other things. When we, um and they're on the agenda, um I know that we've all gotten some notes from people about COVID nineteen. And, and what we're doing, we're gonna do with the courthouse. And I know Mike, you corresponded with one of the people that contacted you and, I think, contacted all of us. About what we were gonna do at the courthouse, and do you wanna share what you was?
Well, I said, basically, what we're following the Iowa Department of Public Health's recommendations, of course, and. As far as mandating uh wearing a mask, I, I don't know, we have the authority to do that. And then how do you enforce such a thing? Of course, it's recommended uh to wear a mask out, out in public, and we certainly want people to do that. And uh if, if they're comfortable, or again, you'd have to, you know, for your own safety, do what's best for your, for your own health, so. Um, um, at this time, I don't think we're changing anything in the courthouse as far as that goes, is requiring a mask to come in here. So basically, yeah, we're just following the guidelines for the Iowa Department of Public Health and uh, you know, to enforce such a act would be. Who's gonna enforce it if you did? You can't expect law enforcement to do that, that's. But that's where we're at, if anybody else has anything to add to that.
No, I think that's, I mean, we posted on the doors that. Masks are recommended, but it's, it's a personal choice, and so.
And, you know, our, our offices here, we're all six, seven feet apart, and we only have three chairs in the office, so. Um, I mean, you're, you're welcome to come, but if, if it's the case is you have to wait your turn, that's, that's the scenario here to. Limit, limit access to, you know, so we can do our social distancing as, as we so requested, but.
And I guess the other thing I wanted to discuss is um Lisa told us uh about the bond referendum. If we decide, I mean, if we decide we're not gonna have it till March, do we have to do anything about the September? We just would wait till, just a deadline for the March.
Right.
Um decision.
Correct.
What is our, yeah, what is our deadline for September?
Twenty fourth, tw- twenty fourth.
So you would need to pass something.
Next week.
Next week. If you're, if you're really, I mean, and we need to get a hold of Bond Council and we need to do a few things if you are thinking of that.
I did get um a, a call from uh Marla at ECIA. Um and she does have some preliminary stuff John sent her. Um and she has a kind of a rough draft of what uh a pamphlet would be.
I saw some pictures of some that they have done in two different sizes.
Yeah.
They look nice.
Yeah, so um.
And I like that because it's, it's open, it's wide open, I mean, you don't have to open it.
Right, and she said that uh. Depending on what our classification is, she gave us a couple prices as to what it costs to, to do that. Um so. As I've said before, I really would like to have it in September, but I, I'm really worried about it. I've had some people say, go ahead and have it, if it doesn't pass, then you'll have to do it again in March. If it does pass, then you're home free. So, you know. But I, and then I get to the fact that, you know, do we really wanna spend the money to have a special election? Uh if there's a lot of concern about whether it will or won't pass.
We're, we're in a really, really bad situation.
Yeah, we are.
I mean, we have, we have nowhere to take prisoners, nobody's taking them. And if we close ours, we're, we're dead in the water, and if we don't get started soon. What do we do with the ones we have? If we bring some, you know, crazy people in, three or four in a group, we don't have, we can't separate them. What we do, take one home with us or try, we aren't gonna find a place to go with them, Dubuque's swamped, I mean, or has COVID, Clinton County's backed out. To me, I think it's imperative that we move forward, so, before we get in a real bind. Because I don't know where you'd go with them. And all it takes is one blow up and we're, I don't know.
I hear exactly what you're saying, Larry.
I, I mean, I would.
We're working, we had Brennan here, he's put in some input into the building. I mean, I don't see what's gonna change after the election. Even the housing thing, and they said they're down, I think it was down eight houses from last year at this time, so the, the market's running. ATV place, you can't, you can't get an ATV until uh September, October, if you order it, I mean, they're sold out, I mean. The economy is good, things, people are doing stuff, unemployment's up, but yeah, it should be, because everybody's getting an extra six hundred dollars a week, what's wrong with their unemployment? I mean, this is, I don't know, it's scary where we're at, because we're, we're going into debt so fast, but I don't see it getting any better. I think people realize that, I put it on the radio, I asked Dennis to do a little survey thing on the radio. Did you listen to that? Oh, my God. So we asked, you know, whatever, and one says, well, I still think we should put it on top of the old jail. And then another one came in and says, um. One says, well, they're building the hospital now, just add it on to that, as long as you're busy with it. And the other one said, well, it needs to be on the courthouse, so they need to put it on the courthouse, and I'm like. All the work we've done, all the information we've put out there, I don't think we're gonna gain any. I mean, after seeing this nice flyer thing coming in the mail, I think it's the simplest, it's an easy way of doing it. It gets it out there, people are gonna look at it because it's open, I mean, you see the floor plan, it's gonna be nice and colorful, and it's got the information on it. And we've done what we need to do, I mean, I don't, yeah. Little hometown meetings or whatever, they didn't work, I mean, look.
Twelve was the most.
Yeah, twelve, we had one thing, I mean, what else can we do? I think we've done our due diligence on, you know, we're working with the possible both new sheriffs on it. The footprint is good, I mean, if we need to change some stuff on the inside, it's no big deal now, I mean.
I mean, I, I guess the bond issue basically is to. Allocate so many dollars to the jail, six point three million to build a new jail. Um and you're right, if the floor plan after the election, if. If the floor plan changes somewhat, uh because of whatever happens with the election. Um, we can deal with that. But the actual number of beds wouldn't change. Maybe some of the rooms inside the, the footprint would change, but I don't know. It's just, it's, it's a really tough call.
It is, I get that, but I mean, it's, it's a necessity, I mean, it's, it just needs to be done. I mean, you're gonna have those people.
I told you last week when I saw the jail in Manchester.
Yeah, yeah.
If I'd had a big semi, it would have been back down here. And it's basically the same floor plan that we have.
And those prices are good, I mean, that one in Wisconsin where they're talking fifteen million to do basically the same thing.
And when you look at what the interest rates are on the bonds right now, one and a half percent.
Yeah.
That's another thing to consider, so.
Here over the nineteen years, that's, I mean, that washes the cost of the election right out the door. And just, we need it, and we need it, we needed it for years, we need it right now. I mean, we have, how many people out there that should be in jail, doing their time, and they're not? And that's just, it's almost like our bridge program, we've got all these damn bridges that need fixing. And our jail's in the same situation, I mean, yeah, it's all coming at the same time, but I think we just need to deal with it and move forward. And I've talked to the head guy from Farm Bureau and he says, no, we understand you do need the jail. There's, so, this is, well, maybe you should wait till March, so, and I'm like, so what, what do we gain by that? And that's my dilemma, I mean, we've been there for so long, and, and why would we wait another six months, especially when times are so. Turn, I mean.
Everything, I mean, times are up in the air.
Yeah, everything is.
We don't know what's around the corner.
Oh, certainly don't.
So.
I guess that's my input on it.
I guess is the can. Should we at least have it on the agenda next week so that if we, we can make a decision as to whether we are or aren't going to have a September bond issue?
Sure, we can have it on the agenda.
If you need help on Labor Day weekend, I'm happy to put in, do whatever I can.
I said before, whatever you decide, we're gonna do our job, I mean, we'll, we'll do it, we'll handle it, we'll get it done.
I feel good about it, I mean, I just think we.
Well, I think we should have on the, have it on the agenda next week, and if we need to have somebody come and discuss. We can have a work session before the board's meeting with the bonding attorney.
And we're gonna have both um Brett and Steve come in too, and say a little bit or whatever too, I mean, it's. I don't, yeah.
I don't know, just.
It's a tough decision, I get it.
And I, I guess I keep going back to the fact that. Our first bond, first two bond issues was for a much bigger facility. And this one is costing us almost as much as that did for fifty beds for thirty. And. Next year, it might be as, it might be more than it did for the fifty beds. Because we, construction prices keep going up. So I guess we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't, but. I don't know. We put it on the agenda and.
We'll make a decision.
Give a lot of thought to it this week.
And again, if the public's listening, yeah, we, we certainly want your input on it, so.
Absolutely.
We've had a fair amount of input on it already, and you certainly would like to hear from you. Anything else? Any other business before the board?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried, meeting adjourned, and have a great day.